Our District Two Twenty Eight Regular Board Meeting to Order. Can I get roll call, please?
Mrs. Leeison?
Here.
Mrs. List?
Here.
Miss Law?
Here.
Mr. Motley?
Here.
Mr. Stern?
Here.
Mr. Russell?
Here.
Mrs. Russell.
Here, please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. All right, moving on to item two point one. Can I get approval for, can I get a motion to approve the July sixteenth, twenty twenty four regular enclosed meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Miss Leeison, second by Miss Motley. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Leeison?
Aye.
Mrs. Motley?
Aye.
Mrs. List?
Aye.
Miss Law?
Aye.
Mr. Stern?
Abstain.
Mr. Russell?
Aye.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye. Can I get a motion to approve the August thirteenth, twenty twenty four Committee of the Full Meeting Minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Wickham, second by Miss Motley. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Wickham?
Aye.
Mrs. Motley?
Aye.
Mrs. Leeison?
Abstain.
Mrs. List?
Aye.
Miss Law?
Aye.
Mr. Stern?
Aye.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye. Moving on to our superintendent, superintendent report.
Thank you, Mrs. Russell. Just a few items for the board tonight. First, just want to welcome back officially on behalf of the district, all of our students and staff. Last time we met, we welcomed back the freshmen. We now have all four buildings and our Delta Academy rolling. Just to give you a little preview, it's not the full ten day official count, but we're at four thousand seven hundred and forty-eight students across the campuses. Fourteen oh five, these are registered students. They're still making appointments and caught up at each of the campuses. Bremen at fourteen oh five, Tinley at a thousand and five, Hillcrest at nine eighty-nine, and Oak Forest at thirteen forty-nine. So, strong numbers, happy to have everyone back, definitely a good, positive, solid energy and welcome going back to the start of the year. With that being said, at each of your spots, you'll see your board activity passes by all means. You can use those at your convenience. I don't have any and seen yet events. Wanted to make sure you got those in your hands before the start of the school year. And lastly, most importantly, it's my honor to announce this, some congratulations are in order for the board. So, this board, Bremen District Two Twenty Eight, was one of forty-six high schools out of over eight hundred districts to earn the Illinois Association of School Boards School Board Governance Recognition Designation. Our president, under her leadership, Christine Russell, did a lot of work with the team behind the scenes with Tiffany to gather this portfolio and present it and were awarded that recognition. So this recognition is designed to acknowledge those school boards that engage in activities and model behaviors that lead to excellence in school governance, in support of quality public education. And we will have some recognition at the November conference for those who are able to attend. But I didn't want to wait that long, so I wanted to get you a small token of congratulations. So, I have a little something for you. It's what I would consider some bragging rights, right? So bring this to work, it's a paperweight, all right? And I want you to put it out every time you move some papers around and brag a little bit too. So, congratulations, it's really a pretty, pretty cool accomplishment to know where you're at here and the work that you're doing is greatly appreciated. Congratulations. That's all for me.
All right, thank you, Dr. Super, and thank you very much for the gift.
Absolutely.
Do we have our principal reports?
Good evening, congratulations on a well deserved recognition. It's been a great start to the year at Oak Forest High School. Just wanted to also thank, you guys have been recognized for something, but we know it's true as well because as we walk through the buildings, we see all the wonderful things that you guys have done for us with all the new improvements and the construction. It was great to open this school year and for the first time in our fifty-four year history, we do not have any orange or blue lockers left in the building. Certainly, no, no diss. I'm the first principal of Oak Forest High School who picked those colors for his alma mater. But it's really nice to see the Bengal colors in the hallways and have had lots of people comment about just how bright those hallways are. And so, special thanks to our custodians too, who did a wonderful job. It's looking wonderful as we open the year. We did have an open house last Monday night, can't believe it's over a week already that we did that. It was very well attended for our freshmen and transfer students. Last minute questions they had about anything, we were able to answer. And it was just a great event. We had a hundred and eighty-one of our incoming freshmen attend a Bengal's Fresh Start over the summer. It was a one day program where they did, met with our varsity club students and leadership students. They worked on team building, collaboration, leadership skills during that. They actually received their iPads early through that program as well. So, we were really excited to get those students in the building a little bit early. And we've had some wonderful students come out for our different athletics programs. We actually had six, we have sixty-four players on our soccer teams this year, so that's the highest we've ever had in our school history. We of course now have three levels of boys soccer, we're really excited about that. We had also great numbers of females come out for our volleyball program. We actually have forty-eight young ladies on those teams. And so, Mr. Mansky's been busy adding on different levels and adding B games for our freshman volleyball players as well. A special thanks to those coaches of those sports. We really think we're starting to see so many more students come out because they're working so closely with our junior highs. So that's been really successful. Just want to invite anyone who wants to come or just maybe pay attention on social media. We're going to host our very first Bengal Nation Beautification Day on September seventh. That's an idea from Dave Curtin, our new associate in the building. It's a chance for our athletic teams, our students, our community to come out and just help us beautify. As you know, we have a great campus there. There's a lot of, a lot of things that when everybody pitches in can get done quite quickly there. So, we're looking for people to maybe pull some weeds and plant some flowers and so we're really excited about that as we kick off lots of different things that we're hosting on our campus. So that's all for Oak Forest. And Dr. Wazinski is next from Bremen.
Hi, everyone. I'm going to start, very similar, we didn't practice this back there, but very similar opening remarks. We want to, I mean, I want to personally thank the board, Kevin Baffo, district administration, our custodial and maintenance staff at Bremen High School, and coming back into the building. Not, I mean, we're all, I'm there in the summer, Ms. Meany's there in the summer, but our teachers come back in and they get to see just a shining sparkling building from, you know, buffing all the floors to the major projects that we had going on this summer. We painted a large section all the way around of our field house with some red and gray, so we brought some school colors there. We did a major renovation of our pool, so we had the tile acid washed. Two of our maintenance team were in the pool for the majority of the summer, acid washed it, I mean drained it, acid washed, re-tiled different portions of it. They buffed all of the metal around the sides. It was hot in there, we were dropping it regularly, but they took a lot of pride in that project and the pool is absolutely beautiful, it's sparkling. So stop by and see the pool if you have not seen it in a while, you will be blown away by how great that looks. And we also got the main gym floor redone and the new bleachers. So, thank you guys for your support and just staying on top of these major renovations because from the little things to the floor to the major things, bleachers and the pool, the building just looks great and we've received so many compliments already. Our first parent engagement meeting of the year is tomorrow night at six P M. So that will just be our opening invitation to parents to come in and kind of talk through all of those tips and tricks to start their students off for a successful school year. We did a flipped class meeting this year, so instead of having our kids come down to the gym, we actually did a slideshow and recorded our lovely faces and voices on it as administrators and teachers showed it in their classrooms, so we've already pushed that out. So we're just trying to really engage with our parents any way that we can and inviting them in tomorrow. This Friday is our red and gray scrimmage and our back to school bash. So our back to school bash was scheduled for last week, but we got rained out, so we coupled it with our red and gray scrimmage on Friday night. So after school will be from three to five thirty. We have lots of inflatables, if you think they're just for little kids, you're wrong. Our, our high schoolers go crazy for the obstacle courses and all the crazy stuff. So we've got inflatables, food trucks from local businesses are going to be out there. We've got a DJ, it's going to be a lot of fun, as well as a secondary activity and athletic fair to get kids involved. And then we kick off Coach O'Shea, Mr. O'Shea will have his athletic parent meeting followed by a number of scrimmages. It used to, long, long ago, just be our football team that scrimmaged and now I'd say almost all of our athletic programs will be doing some sort of parent meeting with a scrimmage affiliated with their program. So we're excited for that if you want to come out on Friday night. And it sounds crazy, but I won't see you guys before homecoming. Friday, the thirteenth is our Bremen Homecoming, so we'll have lots of festivities to invite you guys to. Our pep rally, Hall of Fame induction, our parade. So, Tiff will be sending you guys that information, but it's wild to think about just in a few weeks, we will be celebrating homecoming at Bremen. So, thank you. And next up is Erin Towns from Delta G.
Hi, guys, welcome back. I'm going to keep it short today because we just had our second day with students today, but I have to tell you, it has been so much fun over at Delta Academy the past two days. Last week was fun too, with our teacher to get everything ready, trying to make the space as nice and welcoming as possible. We have four new staff members who are over with us this year. So that's been kind of fun to get them integrated with our new team and have some new initiatives and ideas rolling out with that. Keep a lookout, we're going to be sending out invites shortly. We're going to open, open a, have an open house or a tour available for you guys and our district staff members to come on through and see. Since the last time we hosted one of these, we've actually added our T E P program as well as, we've collapsed our night school program and have boosted our numbers during the day. So we really want to highlight that, we're working on a couple of things, we're thinking that we will have that within the next month or so for you to all come out and see what's going on over at Delta Academy. But we are very excited to announce that even though we only had two days with kids, we have had our highest starting week numbers to date with our attendance rates, which was very exciting. We're also starting a new platform, piloting subject dot com in lieu of edgenuity. And we did like a pulse check yesterday and we checked back in again with kids today, again teachers, and the response has been overwhelmingly positive. So I really think it's a great product. I appreciate you guys letting us test that out this year. I think it's going to provide a better service for our students and a better education overall. So, so far, so good and stay tuned for the invite. Thank you very much. Next up is Dr. Nolan from Tinley.
Hi, everybody. You know, it's always fun to start a new school year and I'd like to give some credit as we ended up the summer and a little shout out to Master Baffo sitting over here to my right. That is what, how we call, what we call him at Tinley Park High School on the regular. You know, thank you to the Board of Education for employing our kids over the summer. I believe we started with four, but we had three mainstays throughout the summer. And if I'm, if I'm correct with this, I believe the three, two of the three never missed one day. And I'm going to tell you what, they did everything over the summer. And some of those days, it was really hot for them to be out there as well. We made sure they had water, made sure they had breaks, but I'm going to tell you what, they are a reason why our school looks so nice to start the school year and helping out our groundskeeper get things ready. So they really, their, their work really shined through and helped us, you know, really open our doors ready to go, along with our beautiful new gym floor and our beautiful new bleachers, it really looks great. You need to come over and see it. Leading into our freshman ice cream social, and it's always amazing to me, I take no credit for the ice cream social, that was something that John McGraw started back in the day. And there were a couple of things that he always wanted to see continue on. And I told him he didn't have to worry about that because I'll make sure that they continue on while I'm in this role. And that, one of those was the ice cream social. And we have gone from meeting in the auditorium to start to kind of a little bit spilling out of the auditorium to now we have to meet in the gym because that's how many people come to our ice cream social every year. And I know John is smiling down upon us when he sees that because it's just a packed house of kids that come for nothing more than an introduction of who's there, they have their schedules, they walk the halls, ask a few questions, have a little bit of ice cream before school starts. So again, another wild success. Leading into our opening day of school, again, I get a little giddy when I think about it because really hats off to the Titan staff. And our cheerleaders and our band, I mean, it's really, it's a very short production because it only goes last for about a half hour, but teachers in blow up costumes and, I mean, two of them were, had like the horse ones, so they were dressed like Titans riding horses. I mean, it was waving at the buses, waving at parents, the drum line out there, the cheerleaders out there. I hope we distracted them enough from the terrible construction that's taking place on one hundred and seventy-fifth street as they pulled in the parking lot, but lots of smiles, lots of fun. And you know what, you're going to open up school after the summer, let's open it on a good celebratory note. So I can assure you that that was done at Tinley Park High School and we're ready to go. Our first parent night is Wednesday, September fourth, and you're welcome to join us. Hats off to another great year. And last but not least, the host of tonight, Mr. Hawkins.
Got a presentation, so Mr. Milton's going to pull that up for us. So we're going to present tonight on our freshman academy. We presented previously on freshman academy, but we sort of wanted to give everyone here, especially the board, a bit of an update on where we progressed in the past few years. The success that we've had can be directly attributed to the fact that, that all of you have supported us so well with the resources and things like that that we've been able to have here. So, so we're currently, we, we call it as the administrative team, we're in a turnaround program, you know, a turnaround process. And so, the progress that we've made in the three years, the past three years, we focused on the academics primarily first. Pass rate, freshman on track rate, those types of things, graduation rate. We developed a grade level team structure and those things have now enabled us, because of the success that we're having, to now get sort of to the next level of progression in that turnaround. Just a quick recap, ninth grade on track, or F O T as we call it, means that freshman needs to pass five classes, no more than one semester E in a core course, English, Math, Science, Social Studies. And that on track is a key predictor, so it's important to us because those students that finish on track are going to be way, way, way more likely to graduate on time. And ultimately, why are we here? To have students graduate from high school, okay? So, some numbers that we're going to put up. That's the progression that we've had up to this point. So, very, very proud. We hit ninety-eight percent freshman on track this past school year. And so, a little bit of, you know, you can see the upward trend that we've been achieving that we've been really working on. And it's not just, you know, you see the pass rate up there, ninety-nine point seven, and this is something that I, that I feel really strongly about. The naysayers that see these types of numbers and how does Hillcrest come up with these types of numbers, it's, it's not us just passing kids, just to pass kids. It's a lot of hard work by our staff, our interventionist, our teachers, the students are putting in a ton of work, getting the families involved, you know, it's, it's really become a community process that we've gone through here. And you can see our, our average over S Y twenty-three, we were at ninety point seven percent. So, you know, Colin Milton likes to round up and we went ninety-one percent. But that was, the state average was eighty-seven point four, and for African American students, the state average was seventy-eight point nine. So, really proud of the numbers that we're putting up as a school. And to hit that ninety-nine point seven percent freshman pass rate, when you can count how many failing grades there are in, in your entire freshman class on a couple of hands, that, that's a pretty proud achievement by all of us. So, next up is going to be Amy DeForty, our Assistant Principal of Teaching and Learning, to talk about some of the things, as I said, we're not just passing kids, here's some of the things that we're doing to get our students involved in Hillcrest.
Thanks, Ron. Well, our teachers definitely contribute to the success that our students are experiencing. We have high quality instructors that are dedicated. And it starts at the beginning of the year. So, we know that that transition from middle school to high school can be challenging to navigate for a lot of our freshmen. So our teachers take the time right now, this part of the year, to really establish relationships in their class and they continue this relationship building throughout the year. So it creates a safe and inclusive environment so that we can get into engagement strategies and getting students really involved in the classroom as much as possible. Now, teachers have a common plan period which allows them to collaborate and support with each other on a daily basis, but in addition to that, we have formal bimonthly meetings during their common plan time, which allows us to really tackle a variety of things. So we are talking about teaching and instructional strategies, grading practices, sharing what's working from one class to the other. But more importantly, this is a time where we're able to really take each and every student that's in the class and come up with a plan for them. So when we see attendance drop, when we see behavior slip, when we see a change, we tackle it right away. And it's just another way to make sure that none of our students are falling through the cracks. Go ahead, Colin. We've also enhanced some of the systems in the last couple of years. So, like I just said, we're getting together on SIP days as teams of teachers discussing the needs of individual students. Now we're closing the loop. We do what's called the freshman cafe, which is an environment where we set up tables like a cafe and we invite a student in. So it's one adult and one student and we're having the conversation with them. We already know what the teachers are saying and we know what it is we have to do. Now we want them to be a part of it. We're asking them, what are your strengths? What are your weaknesses? Where do you see that you need help and how can we help support you? To make sure that they're involved in that process. We've really amped up our student recognition for students that are doing what they're supposed to do all the time and also increased our incentive programs, especially in areas of grades, behavior and attendance, for students that need a little bit more motivation. And some of the awards that we started this year, start our award each semester for students that are just doing the right thing or trying really hard in their classes. This isn't necessarily the A B student that's always getting honored, these are the students that need a little bit more motivation. Okay, we've got the grid award. Sometimes it's not about the grade, sometimes it's about the effort and that motivation, that award really helps students to see what they're doing matters. And then we have F L C competitions in our freshman learning center where we have competitions between each other for attendance. Because in the freshman academy, your attendance matters. At Hillcrest High School, your attendance matters, but also your presence matters. It matters in the class, it matters in the hallways, we want to see you. We made a big push last year, we wanted every single freshman to be involved in at least one activity or club, and I'm proud to tell you that we had a thirteen percent increase in the number of activities that they participated in. And we know the benefits of students having somewhere to go after school. Okay, and last but not least, I don't think that we give ourselves enough credit for the time and the effort that we put into relationships that we build with our freshmen. I can honestly tell you that I know almost every single freshman now sophomore, I'm checking in with them, we all are. Sometimes it's a daily basis, sometimes it's an hourly basis based on what the kids need, but they know they have another adult watching them, helping them, supporting them. And now with this beautiful grade level team structure, they roll into sophomore year and I already have these relationships established with the student so they know that I can pick up right where I left off and continue that success into sophomore year.
All right. I'm going to walk you guys further through the system of supports that we have. We run a multi-tiered system of support, you guys have probably heard that term, it's kind of a educational buzzword these days, it means different things to different people. For, for us, this is, this is a little bit of what it looks like. So, Amy was just talking about the freshman academy. We, we consider that a tier one support, that's something for, for all our students, all our freshmen. So, anyway, so, so all the freshmen have, have, have the advantage of having mostly teachers that were hand selected for the academy. Not, not only are they great teachers, but they're also great that, you know, at that age level. So, they would meet, exchange ideas, strategies, all, all those things that Amy just talked about. So I'm going to talk a little about further what we have at the tier two level. That's what we, we consider targeted support. So, not every freshman is, is going to get that level of support, but it's the freshmen that need it. We, we do a lot with grade data here, we do a lot with behavior data. And so, if somebody falls off, whether it be attendance, grades, behavior, we, we know about it and we, we get them that support right away. So, we go from universal to targeted and then that group at the top. Ideally, that's a very small group of students that need that intense level of support. And the other concept here is it's the whole child. You're not just looking at academics, but you're looking at that S E L side, social emotional, as, as well as the academic. So, for, for us, our tier two, like I say, our, our main academic support for our freshmen is going to be the freshman learning center. Freshman learning is, the center, I, I think we have them in all the campuses. For, for us, I feel like we, we've evolved and we, we are, we're, we're getting better every year. You saw the numbers that Principal Towner posted up. This is part of a student success org chart, it went out to all the staff members so that they're aware, they have a Q R code, so if you have a freshman student that's been struggling, maybe they've missed some class, they need to be caught up, they need some remediation, then they can push a Google form and, and, and request that the individual or individuals get that help. Ashley Alexander, she started here a few years back, she came to us as a para and, and now she is running the learning center, she's also an English interventionist. We, we've got science intervention from two of our, our veteran science teachers, they do a great job. We have a math tutor and we, we have a para and, and all these folks are, are in the freshman learning center. All right, here's a look at some of the, the grade data that, that we run. Dr. Kane wrote the code for this first one, we call it the P M D, the Progress Monitoring Data. And then last year, we started another report that, that I call Grades by Core. Quick snapshot of, of what the P M D report looks like. So, the learning centers, remember, they're on the half period. So you have four A, four B, and so on. So every lunch period, you, you have, you know, lunch on one side, you have a supported study hall on the other. So, for each of those half periods, so eight in all, they kind of have a, this also kind of doubles up as a seating chart, but for every student, I, I blacked out the names, but that's where the name would be. And you see what, what the grade, the teacher, and you also have absences, we want to keep track of that and intervene if, if students are not attending their classes. The IDs are hyperlinked into the power school, so sometimes we run this once, twice a week, student might say, no, no, I'm not getting a D anymore, I'm getting a B, it turned in my work. You just click on the ID, it hyperlinks you into power school and then you can kind of check in real time what the status is. So that is the, the P M D report. Any grade that's, that's below passing is highlighted red, D's highlighted yellow and C's in upper green. All right, this, I won't get too in the weeds on this, but this, this is the Grades by Core. So each, each staff member, if, if you're providing the English support or the math support, they have a tab. So let's say your math. So you would click here, the names are blacked out, but these would be your math students, you would see which period, which class, and then you would see that grade. And again, we're running this once, twice a week. And then the idea is that we want to know every student that's struggling. And my expectation is, you know, we're not perfect, but you see that there's supports in there, I kind of blew that one up so you see like lesson remediation, retakes, makeups, homework, a, a grade discussion and so on and so forth. So, the idea is if a kid is struggling, they should have some contact from one of the staff members in the freshman learning center. At the very bottom, you kind of see overall, if I am the math tutor, that I see what my pass rate is, I see how many interventions that I've done in a week. And week over week, I'm looking at improving grades overall. All right, so that's Grades by Core. Here's a couple pictures at the bottom. From freshman learning center, you can see bottom left, that's Ms. Mullitt, one of the science interventionists. I would say it was day three and she was already running a lab, the science teachers got to it right away. And students that were, you know, hadn't, you know, they had missed that first day or two, and then she was making up that lab with those students in, in the freshman learning center. And then a couple other shots, you know, like Principal Towner said, we, we appreciate the support, we've been able to add computers, we've been able to upgrade the spaces, the furniture, that type of thing. So, academic, behavioral, we, we're supporting them on, on, on all sides. All right. Going, going further up the, the pyramid to the, kind of the top end of tier two would, would be our Concept Recovery. So, so that's a program that the district runs. It's a program that, that we, we definitely take advantage of here. It'd be kind of for us the top end of a tier two support. And so, the way that works is if despite the tier one and other efforts in the freshman learning center, student ends up in the fifty percent range, that's going to be how the grade's going to close out, teachers can recommend them for Concept Recovery and then they are able to repeat certain essential skills and content without having to repeat the entire semester and they can earn their credit that way. So, it's kind of a, a last ditch effort to get their credit before they go to more of a tier three program for us. We, we had more freshmen last year than, than we've had, we had twenty-four freshmen participate in that program. Moving to our tier- Moving to our tier three, now that would be where they have failed, they have fallen behind, they need to recoup those credits. That's the digital learning center. Typically for us, where so many students have fallen behind, we've needed to fill those sections mostly with upperclassmen, but as our pass rate has gone up, we, we, we have capacity, so we had 14 freshmen, they earned credits in the DLC. Mr. Washington is, is going to talk a little bit about the ARC, ARC program. We also had students earn credits there.
All right, good evening. Just to give you a little background on our ARC program. So originally when we came up with this idea, it was used as a, a vehicle to, as a, a one last intervention before a student might have been outplaced. We had extra space down there, so we said, well, why not try some of these interventions with our freshman students? Some of them may have an attendance issue, behavior issues. So we, we, we opened that up to them. So it starts with the parent meeting with the dean. Dean Kelly is down there right now, last year as well, doing great work down there. He has those meetings. There's behavior contracts, there's attendance contracts, because it's not just about the behavior of the student, it's about the attendance as well. We have mentors down there from ISC4, ALAM, Alternative Learning Opportunity Program. They're down to help. With this year, we've also expanded into additional rooms. So we've, we've got, we're working with students currently, the freshman students down there currently as well. Got the...
All right, and just out of all three of these programs here, that just for freshmen, that was 100 semester credits earned from, from our freshman last year.
So these are the other interventions that we've used with our freshman students. You know, our goal was to increase attendance, reduce altercations and build relationships. And that has improved our climate and discipline for not just our freshmen, but for all classes. So the grade level team provides extensive support, intensive support for our freshman students. We established collaborative relationships with our feeder schools. We've gone out as an administrative team and met with the feeder school administration, met with students, give them an idea of what they can expect when they get here. We also have step-up days. We have our freshman students in, in the building before the rest of our students are in the building, to get them acclimated with what it means to be a HAW. Our deans, our deans and social workers and counselors, psychologists, all work together. Sometimes we say our deans are also social workers because they handle a lot of those emotional issues with our students. Our social workers provide groups, emotional regulation groups for those students who, who need those supports. Again, counter psychologists, it's a team, truly a team effort. And our administrative team regularly does check-in, check-outs with students that are recommended to us or to students that we've known and built relationships. And as Mr. Forty pointed out earlier, we've offered, offered incentives and rewards and different celebrations for these students who are doing the right thing. And it's, it's worked out great and it's been a successful program and I thank you for your support in, in supporting the ARC and everything else that we do. Thank you very much.
To close out, this, Principal Towner alluded to our grade level teams. The, the, the whole concept is, is probably a presentation for another day, but I circled the freshman grade level team because that's where our turnaround really started. We started with the freshman class, started with the academy and it also started by making the counselor, the social worker and the dean dedicated to working exclusively with the freshman class, that, that group would meet with, with the administrator and they would meet as a team. And so that worked really well for us. And, and so we said, you know what, let's double down on that and let's not just do all this great work for our freshmen and have them come out of the, the gate at 90-some percent on track, only to kind of fall off in the middle grades and then for us to have to scramble to get them across the stage for graduation. So we've built a system where we do the same type of rigorous support across all grade levels, so that we, we start them out strong and, and they finish strong. So, thank you. That's it.
Any questions? Okay, thank you for your time. Appreciate it. Thank you.
[applause] Is Ron over there? Oh, he is there, okay. I, I don't have a question. I just want to say thank you for presenting that material. I, myself, I'm so personally impressed and proud of the work at Hillcrest and seeing them grow and taking advantage of all these opportunities and really, it's, it really kudos to you and your leadership, so thank you so much for that.
Thank you, thank you. And it's, well, all these, the rest of the admin team and the staff too as well. I mean, we, we, we are a very cohesive unit and we're really hard for our students, so thank you.
All right. There are no other principal reports? Other principals? All right, moving on to our FOIA requests.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Wrestler. Since the last record was issued, we received the following Freedom of Information Act requests. Sherry Reed from Smart Procure requested all purchasing records from 2824 to 72424, including purchase order number, purchase date, line item details, including quantity and price, vendor ID number, name, address and contact info. This request has been completed. And Owen Wang from South Cug News requested a list of all teacher and staff, including staff, teacher name, school name, title and salary for all schools in the district for the upcoming school year. This request has been completed. Thank you.
Any board member reports? I just want to welcome all the students and staff back. I'm so looking forward to another great year, school year at District 28. As far as the, the governance recognition, I do want to congratulate the board here and my fellow board members. While the, filling out the form was a little bit intimidating, I'll tell you right now, it wasn't hard to fill it out because there have been so many great things that this board has done together in the past two years. The hard part was when Tiffany came back to me and told me I had to reduce each answer to 200 words or less. And it's very hard to reduce, you know, or combine things when you want to highlight all the amazing things that we've done. And it's not just the actual, you know, things that are happening outside the boardroom, but even how we handle our own work and our own superintendent evaluation and our onboarding of new board members. So I know we, we, we've grown and I, every board member here has grown also and I couldn't be more proud. I have a better board member, better board president because of each one, everyone here. So thank you. All right, if there are no board member reports, moving on to new business. Ms. Morrison, 4.1.
Item 4.1 is the bills, addendums, bills, payroll and CPS bills. These items are being recommended for full board approval.
So moved. Second. Moved by Ms. Gleason, second by Ms. Motley. Any discussion? Roll call please. Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mrs. Motley?
Aye.
Mrs. List?
Aye.
Ms. Lott?
Aye.
Ms. Stern?
Aye.
Ms. Wrestler?
Aye. Moving on to item 4.2, Dr. Williams?
Thank you, Mrs. Wrestler. 4.2 is the overnight field trip request for the Oak Forest Tinley Park Choir, as presented at Committee of the Whole. Superintendent is recommending this for full board approval.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Wickholm, second by Ms. Lott. Any discussion? Roll call please. Mr. Wickholm?
Aye.
Ms. Lott?
Aye.
Mrs. List?
Aye.
Ms. Motley?
Aye.
Ms. Stern?
Aye.
Ms. Wrestler?
Aye. Moving on to item 4.2, Dr. Gago's?
Thank you, Mrs. Wrestler. Under retirement, Trave Gary and John Pepper. Approval of the retirement contract for Michelle Jurgens. Under resignations, Brianna Washington, Nicholas DeForty, Michael Reed, LaBaron Hull, Randy Mathis, Alicia Plutren, Isenia Salario, Delia Harrington, Evette Galvin, Morgan Weber, Urban Fuentes, Laura Baldwin and Joseph Pearson. Under leaves, Geraldine Whitman, Samantha Bayo, Steve Hogan and Brenda Gonzalez. Under change in position, Ron Towner and Eric Washington. Under employment, Kathleen Mixon, Molly Fahey, Andrea Esposito, Monique Golding, Ashley Alexander, Ryan Nagel, Melissa Griggs, Vivian Dugan, Ed Kristosik, Joseph Abraham, Joe Bozeman, Cheryl and Thomas, Joslyn Hudgens, Tamara Clark, Brianna Gill, Cara Farag, Charles Bennett, Caroline Cruck, Nancy Newman, Crystal Gilich, Kiara Clark, Connor Selgars, Ryan Trisbilske, Riley McErland, Shannon Dearie, Philip McGovern, Chazene Martin, Angelica Perez, Thomas Falby and Allison Neary. These are being recommended to the full board for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Gleason, second by Mr. Wickholm. Any discussion?
Do we have some really late teacher resignations out there that are out of the norm? Do you know why?
Um, the, a couple of them I do know. Finding employment closer to home was one, finding employment where there was a little bit more money offered was another. Not anything that was, they felt as though they had a bad experience here, it was just a better experience, better, better opportunity for them.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Roll call please. I'm sorry, Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Wickholm?
Aye.
Mrs. List?
Aye.
Ms. Lott?
Aye.
Mrs. Motley?
Aye.
Ms. Stern?
Aye.
Any comments from the public? Yes, Stephanie Melendez?
Good evening. Hello. I am extremely nervous, so I apologize. My name is Stephanie Melendez, like she said. My husband Anthony and I have a daughter, Jayden, who is now a sophomore at Tinley Park High School. We are here today to propose the addition of a girls' lacrosse team to the district and that it be potentially housed with the Tinley Park Titans. Because we already have a functioning boys' team to model, we are hopeful that this will also make it possible to fast-track for the upcoming spring season of '25. Jayden has played lacrosse since she was in fifth grade. She found a home within the Tinley Park Bulldogs organization. Lacrosse quickly became something that she was passionate about and she has been playing year-round ever since. As soon as she started to get serious, we started questioning what might happen when she got to high school, knowing that her district did not have a team for her unlike other schools in our area. Our options were to pay out-of-district fees upwards of $15,000 a year, send her to private school, play club or play on the high school boys' team. Financially, the first two were impossible and frankly, we shouldn't have to dish out more money for her to play club when her male counterparts get to play it for close to nothing in their high school. So she decided to try playing on the boys' team. There has been a district boys' team for quite a few years now. Jayden played her freshman year with the Bengals as a goalie and while inviting, it was clear that Jayden would not succeed in the way that she would if she were on a girls' team. The coach, the coach told us at the end of the season that she would have a real shot at all conference if she were playing on a girls' team. While appreciating his acknowledgement of her skill, it was also abundantly clear to us and to him that she was missing vital opportunities by not having the girls' team to play on. I'd like to outline how different boys' and girls' lacrosse are. Just because they both bear the same name does not mean that they are similar. Boys' lacrosse plays in full protective gear similar to football. Girls play with just a mouthguard and eye protection. The sticks that they use have different sizes, regulations, and there is an addition of a third defensive stick in boys' lacrosse. There are different regulations in almost all aspects of the game and this just scratches the surface. One that I have not yet mentioned though is the level of physical and aggressive contact. In boys' lacrosse, checking is not only allowed, but encouraged by, with their body and using their stick. In complete contrast, girls' lacrosse allows extremely limited body-to-body contact. If still not convinced, I encourage you to watch both games and you will immediately see the differences yourself. We've previously been met with comments like, you have a boys' team that you can play on, as if that was sufficient. To someone who doesn't fully grasp the concept of lacrosse, that may seem like enough, but to a player who dedicates her time playing her respective sport and to then be expected to learn an entirely different one just so she can play is unacceptable and frankly unfair. Thankfully, our daughter's primary position is goalie and although different, it's probably the easiest to cross between. However, her secondary position is defense and she chose not to play that position this past season because she didn't feel physically comfortable playing outside of the goal. We personally know many girls who are coming up from their rec leagues and have decided to not continue their lacrosse careers in high school because they don't want to play full contact with body-checking males. Positions in offense and defense would not only have to completely relearn the game, but also put themselves out on a field with growing high school boys. I am not saying it is impossible and I will never be a proponent of the delicate female persona, however, that is not how everyone feels. I ask you though, if Jayden did decide she wanted to play defense, do you think that she would get the opportunity to go out there and be the muscle over her 180-pound male counterpart? The opportunity will always be lacking regardless of how inclusive the coaches try to be. We have a community of lacrosse players surrounding this district already and I would assume if given the opportunity, many who are interested in trying. Tinley Park Bulldogs has a robust girls', girls' program with many girls coming up this year as freshmen. Oak Forest also have girls coming from their career program. Some of these girls, like my daughter, have aspirations to continue their career into college. Playing four years of boys' lacrosse will not prepare them for the college level. Not to mention that college scouts for girls' lacrosse will not be in the network of boys' lacrosse, therefore giving these girls yet another disadvantage. The fact of the matter is that we are giving our boys the opportunity to either try or continue their career in their respective sport, yet we are denying that same opportunity to our girls. Women's lacrosse is one of the fastest-growing sports. There will be a U.S. women's lacrosse team representing our country in 2028 Olympics for the first time. We have club and rec teams popping up everywhere and growing rapidly in our areas. Our girls are watching the world of women's lacrosse explode around them, year after year. By not giving them a team to play on, we are denying these girls the equal opportunity to play in their rightful space and it is our responsibility as a community and an educational body to give that to them. I did provide some more detail in the differences between, I don't know if I made enough, but I did provide it. And we would love to be a part of facilitating and assisting the district in any way possible to get this running. My husband was a coach and we've been part of the Bulldogs for quite a very long time. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from the public? All right, our announcements are as, oh, there is, I'm sorry, go ahead. Can you provide your names, please?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Java Rogers. I'm from Hazelcrest and I actually alumni Hillcrest. So I'm a senior trustee in Hazelcrest as well. So I was concerned, I'm also a teacher, so I'm concerned about a couple of things that just kind of caught me. I think Hillcrest did a phenomenal job, I just wanted to say that, but I was concerned that the same excitement for the start of the school year for Hillcrest wasn't the same as the other schools. I, I don't hear, I'm not sure if they actually had it or not, but it would be encouraging if they would have the same kind of excitement at the beginning of the school year so that they could be encouraged to attend as well. And I wanted to ask about a community partnership so that we could build upon the success that Hillcrest has started to have as well, so that we could continue to influence the young students who are here. And some, because sometimes I think there's a, not miscommunication, but there's not enough communication between the different systems that children are involved in, not only our systems, but, but as far as community involvement between the village, the school board, park district, if we could somehow find a partnership, especially when we have students that are lacking in some form or another. And also I wanted to ask this other question. I noticed the universities that were highlighted outside, I think that's right, I think that's phenomenal, but I didn't notice any HBCUs. And I want to say sometimes that encourages students as well, just, just as a side note for Hillcrest, that's all I wanted to say. And thank you very much.
If you wouldn't mind, she's got a spreadsheet so we can get your contact information and we get somebody to reach out to you afterwards about your questions. Thank you so much. Any other, that's called, comments? I don't want to miss anybody. All right, our announcements are as follows. Our next Committee of the Whole meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, September 10th, 6:45 p.m. at Hillcrest High School and our next regular board meeting is Tuesday, September 17th at 7:00 p.m. at Oak Forest High School. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Wickholm, second by Ms. Gleason. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys. Have a wonderful evening.